Could all please rise? The Honorable Brandon McCullough, Councilmember, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening and welcome to the 1,901st regular meeting of this Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
President.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Toy will not be with us this evening.
Council-- Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
President McIntyre?
Present. And did you note Councilmember Donavick's status of--
Yes, he's on maneuvers.
He's here, but per an ordinance that the city has, any council member who's away on active military duty is permitted to participate in the meeting remotely. So Councilmember Donavick is with us this evening via phone. At this time, I'd like to have the presentation of the minutes from the 1,900th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on July 6th, 2020.
Move approval?
Support.
Support from Councilmember White.
It's hard to hear with--
I--
Okay.
Barr--
I move.
Councilmember White.
Sorry, I'll take this off now.
All right, and if there's no discussion, we could go ahead, Madam Clerk, and if you would please take the vote on approval of the minutes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved. And at this time, I'd just like to go over some of the new protocols since this is our first time back together since sometime in March. We've been doing this via Zoom. And just to go over the social distancing and the rules within City Hall. Masks are required to be worn inside all city buildings by those who are not medically advised against wearing a mask. And the mask must be worn when not addressing the council, and we have requested that non-family groups seek appropriate social distancing by having at least six feet between non-family members. And six feet is approximately three seats. So we'd like to ask that people be appropriately socially distanced if they're not from the same family. Members of the audience who wish to address the council during the audience communication or an agenda item will be asked to use the east podium, the one right there. And any Livonia elected officials or department heads or employees will use the west podium to my right. And there's hand sanitizer on both podiums for your use. All council members and all meeting participants, as you probably noticed, wore masks as we came into the building or came into the auditorium and came into the building. We're required, as all employees of the city are, to check our temperatures when we come in and check our temperatures when we leave, and hand sanitize, and follow all the protocols. During the meeting, we are not required to wear masks because we are addressing an audience and we have Plexiglas dividers separating us. Also, for those of you who have signs tonight, we're going to ask that the signs be no higher than your head, please, because you block people behind you. So if you could lower the signs, please, to level with your heads, that would be appreciated, and I'm asking you to do that, please. Could you please lower your sign? You. Could you please lower the sign to the height of your head, please? Thank you very much. I'm not asking if there's anyone behind you. I have a request. I make the rules for the meeting. We don't usually permit signs. I understand that people want to have their voices heard tonight, so we're allowing the signs. I will ask you to please lower the sign to the height of your head. All right. Is there-- And I would also like to take this opportunity, on a happy note, to wish our Legislative Director, Ms. Judy Preby, a very happy birthday, I believe. Why are you shaking your head? I know, but I don't think we have another meeting until after your birthday.
Not getting out of it that easy.
So anyway, happy birthday, and we will not be together again, at least in this forum, until after your birthday. So on behalf of all of council and all of your many friends at City Hall and in the city, happy birthday. And at this time, I'd like to go to my colleagues, if anyone has any announcements that they would like to make.
I'm President.
Yes, Vice President Barr?
I just want to say it's good to be with all you in person again. The Zoom meetings worked, I actually think remarkably well considering the circumstances, but there's no substitute for being able to see everybody during the meeting, and it's just good to be with all you, so.
I would echo the sentiments. Zoom works well, and we were happy we had it, and many thanks to our IT department for allowing us to conduct the meetings like we did, and we got used to it, and it worked pretty well, and that was in large part-- No small part due to our Outstanding Information Systems Director, Casey O'Neill. And at this time, I would like to introduce the department heads who are here this evening, beginning in front. And we have slightly different seats tonight, is our Legislative Director, Ms. Judy Preby. To my left, our Outstanding Director of Engineering, Mr. Todd Zalinsik. To his right, also on my left, is Mark Terramina, our Director of Economic Development and Planning. To my right, our outstanding city clerk, Susan Nash, who's getting ready for an election in just a few weeks. And to her right is one of our outstanding city attorneys, Mr. Leo Neville. And I don't see that we have any other department heads with us this evening. And I would also like to take this opportunity to give a very special thank you to the city's Director of Emergency Management, Brian Kahn. Brian, I think, has worked pretty much 24 hours a day since the COVID virus started and has been instrumental in everything that's gone on in the city. We wouldn't have been able to reopen City Hall today. We wouldn't have been able to continue to provide services without Brian's outstanding leadership and guidance, so thank you very much. I think you were here earlier, Mr. Kahn, but thank you for all of that. And at this time, I would like to announce that we have new data regarding item number 10, and I will speak to that when we reach item number 10 on the agenda, which is one of the items on the agenda. And at this time, we go to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We have a communication from the Department of Finance dated June 19th, 2020, regarding various financial statements of the City of Livonia for the month ending April 30th, 2020. That will simply be received and filed. We have a communication from the Department of Finance dated June 26th, 2020, also regarding various financial statements of the City of Livonia for the month ending May 31st, 2020. And we have a communication from the Department of Finance dated June 22nd, 2020 forwarding-- Excuse me. Quarterly Investment Report for the City of Livonia as of May 31st, 2020. And those are all to be received and filed. Items number-- Items 1 through 6 are listed on the consent agenda this evening. Oh, I need-- Before I do that, I need to go back to audience communication. And we set aside half an hour at the beginning of the meeting, and anyone who wishes to address the council on any item not on this evening's agenda has three minutes in which to address the council. So if there's anyone who would like to address the council, please approach the podium. If you'd like to address the council, please go to the podium. And again, anyone addressing the council-- When you address the council during audience communication, you have three minutes.
It won't take three minutes.
Okay, and we'd ask that if you'd like to, that you share your name and address for the record.
My name is Amanda Callahan. I live at 31824 West Chicago. I have a simple question. I've heard some rumblings and some discussions, so I'd like to know if there's any discussion-- notes, anything whatsoever regarding Livonia becoming a sanctuary city.
Ms. Callahan, I don't have any response. I know nothing about it. I don't know if any of my colleagues would like to comment on that.
That's what I expected. Thank you.
I'm President.
Yes, Vice President Barr, sir.
I'll just tell you, no, I've heard nothing of the sort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Trishae Duckworth. My name is Trishae Duckworth. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Survivor Speak. Survivor Speak, these last two, three months, have been protesting against police brutality, police misconduct, and police racial profiling, even right here in the Livonia area. I'm very disheartened to stand here today and know that President McIntyre, you addressed the protesters as, "Oh, that's so cute." I think it was highly disrespectful. I think it was a very racist-filled comment, or privileged, okay? Because I don't want to say that you are racist, and I don't know that for sure. But it was very racially insensitive to make that kind of comment about protesters, because at the end of the day, what we are protesting is extremely serious, and it should be a top priority of everyone on this City Council to ensure that the Livonia Police Department stop profiling citizens and individuals who frequent this city. It needs to stop. Not only that, right here in Livonia, the owner of Wingstop brandished a weapon, a saw, on a customer, big, tall African-American. Not only did he say he wasn't scared, the owner, he brandished that weapon because he said that the individual was recording him. He said to the 911 operator, "Can I attack him?" The 911 operator laughed like it was funny and thought, "Oh, well, no, you can't. The police come, they take the weapon, and they don't arrest the owner." I don't know where or how someone-- As far as police officers, there's called equal protection of the law. So that means it's me, as an African-American, if I brandish a weapon, I am going to jail. And just so--
Excuse me. I'm going to ask the audience-- The rules of the council are there's one person speaking at a time, and we need to allow one person to speak. Thank you. Continue, please.
I hope I get my seconds back, because I don't even think that was something that you even had to--
You have your seconds back.
I don't think that was something that you even had to address. It just shows your disdain for African-Americans, and the agenda of African-Americans as well. And it starts from the top down. And so we are here today to ask you to resign, because you do not have what it takes to run this city appropriately--
Excuse me.
Hold on, hold on. Nope.
Top.
No, because I don't want her to put us out. Give us one second. You can clap at the end, because, see, she is not going to play fair, so we have to play by the rules so that we can be her. At the end of the day, you do not show that you are for all people. You are not for all people, so you should not be heading this city. And at the end of the day, this City Council needs to do something to make sure that the Livonia Police Department equally protects all of their citizens. The owner of Wingstop needs to be arrested. When you brandish a weapon, you go to jail. That is a felony. And so for your officers to pull up, not even want to take a report, and still have not taken a report to this day, it is the most despicable thing that I have ever seen. Thank you.
Yes, I gave her an additional 30 seconds.
Three minutes and 30 seconds. Thank you for your comments. Excuse me. No, there's one person who speaks at a time. Anyone else who'd like to comment or express sentiments, please approach the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. My name's Roy Johnson. For the past 14 years, I've been living in Livonia. Prior to that, I was born and raised here. I'm a product of Livonia Public Schools K through 12. The only time that I lived outside the city is when I was serving my country or when my employment had a residency requirement, when I could not live here. I moved back into this city because of the law enforcement in the City of Livonia. They are top-notch. You can't ask for better than what you get here in Livonia. I have a background in law enforcement. I'm retired from Pontiac, and when I was allowed to move out of Pontiac, I moved into the City of Livonia. That tells you what the reputation of the department's like if you have officers that want to live here and they're not working here. This assault on law enforcement has to stop. It is out of control. You are getting law enforcement agencies around the country that are being held responsible for something that hasn't even happened in the state. You have got elected officials that are allowing people taking over sovereign areas of the U.S. and declaring it free zones. This is unacceptable. At one point, as Democrats and Republicans, we could all sit down and talk, but now it's so divided that it's just absolutely absurd. You can't even have a conversation without starting a fight, and if you disagree with the other person, you end up being called a racist. And that's all I've got. I thank you. I am part of the silent majority. We do support our law enforcement here. We do support our elected officials, and you certainly are not getting paid for what you have to get-- what you have to put up with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Excuse me. We have one person speaking, and that person's at the podium. Good evening.
How y'all doing today? Y'all doing all right? My name is Sean. I don't have a last name. It doesn't need to be addressed. That doesn't matter. This is above me. This is above anything. This is beyond everything. This is beyond generations. This is everything. And I don't want to address the previous man. It doesn't matter. However, this situation, while it might not be directly affecting our state, it didn't start here, but it's always been a part of here. And my problem is this. Everyone wants to say like, "Oh, it's not a big deal." I don't know-- I don't know any of your hearts. You guys don't know me. I don't know you, and I'm not going to address you guys as individuals, and I don't expect you to address me as an individual. I'm a part of a system that doesn't work for me. This situation-- I don't know if you guys know, but this entire city, for people that look like me, is a war zone, pretty much. And I'm not going to use that metaphor to be hyperbolic, but it is, because we have to be cautious. We can't drive in Livonia. My mother tells me in certain situations, "I can't drive through here." I've gotten pulled over, umpteenth amount of times, for situations, because I'm just with my people. I'm just with my friends. I'm a child. But I've been addressed as a man and been pulled over, been stripped of my dignity as a citizen. It doesn't matter if I live in this city or not. I'm a citizen that drives through here and that gives to this community financially and works around here. And the problem is, I don't feel safe here, and that's a situation that's not cool for me. I don't think that's-- I don't think that's fair. So the fact that this place is top-notch, or the law is top-notch, that doesn't matter. It's not true at all. The system is broken. Everything is broken. This system in this country was created and founded on racism, rape, pillaging, dishonesty, and lies. That's at the end of the day. I mean, if you look at this council, look at how diverse it is. I'm not taking shots at you as an individual, but look at how diverse it is. It's funny. It's like we preach diversity, and we preach something that we don't show, the projection of this. It's just-- It's comedic, and it's sad, because it's not funny for us. It's our lives. There are so many people-- There are so many of my friends that are afraid that we can't even go through here, that it's like, once again, it's a dead zone. So my thing is, I'm asking you guys a favor, a please, a pry. I would get on my knees if I could, and I'm crying on the inside, but I'm holding it together for the people that are behind me. Hold these people-- Hold these officers accountable. I don't think any of you are evil inherently. I would hope that you're not. Please start holding these officers accountable, because they're holding us accountable, and they're holding us accountable with our lives, not just our positions. I hope y'all have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Excuse me. Excuse me. And I'd ask if there are people that want to speak, if you line up as the other-- As people are getting close to the end of their three minutes, because we set aside half an hour. And if we don't get through everyone before the meeting, we stay afterwards for anyone who didn't have an opportunity to address the council during the first half hour. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Cunningham. I live at 1806 Linwood, Ann Arbor. I used to live on Bassett Street here in Livonia. I moved when my daughter was five because of the lack of diversity, both in the city and in the schools. So it was very concerning to me. I don't think it's reflective of where we're going as a nation, and I didn't want her to grow up in an all-white school, quite frankly, or in an all-white neighborhood where, when I put out an Obama sign, my neighbors stopped talking to me. That was another reason I moved out. But what I'm asking you, as a council, to do is think about if you have a grandson who's African-American, or a grandchild, or a daughter, or her daughter's friend who's a second daughter to you. Do they feel comfortable coming to your home here in Livonia? I doubt it. Do they feel comfortable driving to your home? I doubt it. And what does that mean? What does that say about you as a city? What does it say about your police force? You're going to have to start thinking about those things, because we're changing as a nation, and we're becoming more diverse, and everyone should feel welcome in this nation that's supposed to be free, to go wherever they want to go. And so what I'm wondering is, what are you, as a City Council, doing to make sure people who are not the color of our skin feel welcome here? And what is your police department doing to reduce the insane amount of racial profiling going on in Livonia? Because it is, and there is no denying it. Training, listening to our groups, listening, period. Coming up with action plans that work. That's what I would suggest. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Once again, I'd ask you to please respect the rules of the council. I'm respecting the rules of the audience communication, so I'd ask you to please respect our rules. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Amanda Chrysler. I've been on the last couple Zoom meetings talking to you as well. I was one of the cute protesters that decided to step into the street where no law enforcement was to protect us at all. And I wanted to talk about my personal experiences with the Livonia Police. Even though I am white, I have still been harassed by the Livonia Police in my own neighborhood growing up, and that was directly related to the war on drugs, which is racist in and of itself, but has hurt more than just the African-American community as well. I grew up in Kimberly Oaks. I had a friend that lived there with me. His dad and his grandma lived here as well. His dad was an alcoholic and a drug addict. He didn't know his mother for the same reason. So clearly, because of those problems, the Livonia Police knew his father very well. And when he was 14, his father died unexpectedly of a heart attack. The Livonia Police responded to this call, so they know the family at this point, and they have no excuse not to when they can claim to be part of the community. Less than a year later, this young boy is sent to juvie for truancy from home and school. Let me repeat. A 14-year-old boy was sent to juvie from Livonia for truancy after his father died. We met when he got out, and we were both living in Kimberly Oaks. On four separate occasions, we were stopped just walking or hanging out in our own neighborhood and physically searched by the police. Mind you, again, we were both minors. He is 15, and I am 14 at this point. Children, stopped for fitting a description of somebody breaking into cars, all four times. I don't think we have that many car break-ins in Livonia. Most people feel pretty safe leaving their car out on the street here. So male officers constantly searched my bags and would question the totally legal and random contents in it, including tampons and makeup. When asked what they were searching for, they responded, all four times, that they were looking for sunglasses or something like that stolen from the cars. This boy was stopped more often by himself and with other friends than just the four times with me. And as children, of course, we had no understanding that we have the right to refuse to be searched by these officers, and they did not let us know those rights. His grandmother that was caring for him passed away as well. The police responded to this as well. Same house, two years before. Still, no help is offered to him by the city. This is a child who has had addiction and death destroy his life, and the police use it as an opportunity to harass him. On the fifth occasion, my other friend-- I'll refer to her as friend 2-- Came over just three hours after her mother had passed away from a long cancer battle.
Thank you for your comments. Your three minutes are up. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Heather. I'm sure you all have seen on the news that city councils across the country are taking action in various forms, whether they're passing ordinances, creating committees, making plans, even just making statements. I haven't heard anything from this council, and I'm curious as to why.
Please continue. This is a time for you to speak to the council.
Well, you did respond to the person about the sanctuary cities.
Excuse me. If any of my colleagues would like to respond, they're free to.
Madam President?
Yes, please, Mr.--
There have been responses over the last few times, but right now, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking for us to respond to, so I encourage you to use your time.
I'm asking why the council has not made any concrete steps, like other city councils across the country have done, to address the racism in Livonia and the profiling in Livonia.
What would you suggest that we do?
I think that's your job.
Excuse me.
But I'm sure I have a lot of suggestions.
But you've come to the podium tonight to speak to us, so I'm asking you what you suggest that we do.
I've come to ask you why you have not acted, and I'm waiting for an answer.
I still don't know what you're asking us to respond to.
I'm asking you what you're going to do to address the racism and the profiling in Livonia. I'm asking for someone here to say, as a council or as an individual councilperson, what you are going to do to address these issues.
I believe Councilmember McCullough would like to address this.
Listen, I've made statements personally on my-- Any kind of social media, and I think a lot of you can attest to that. When you guys come up and you talk about these things, I feel like I'm a perfectionist. I love the city. I know a lot of you speak. You grew up here, and hearing these stories, they hurt. Are the answers something that's going to happen overnight? I can tell you tirelessly that there are some things happening behind the scenes. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that nothing is happening. The Human Relations Commission, I know, has met, and I know that these are small steps. And so, you know, if we go back, I could tell you that I'm personally committed to listening and seeing what strategies can be.
And is everyone else just going to let McCullough take care of this for the council?
But I must say too, to try to be a peacekeeper here, is we do need to work together.
Sure.
We do. And so I know a lot of things have happened, and while, you know, there's a lot of-- On both sides. I definitely think that we do need to provide our law officers resources. I think that there are some needs. We're down 26 officers. So I think-- I look at it as a whole. Do I have all the answers? No, but I'm willing to at least listen and see where we can go. And I'm willing to have an open door. I'm usually open on social media, so if anybody would like to contact me, you have all of our council information on the website, feel free to reach out. At least for me, I'm usually pretty good at getting back. So again, I don't have all the answers for you tonight, but I'm going to tell you that your words are powerful, and these are stigmas that could potentially change.
Thank you. I'll still be waiting to hear from the rest of the council members.
Thank you for your comments.
Declare racism as a health care--
Excuse me. Excuse me. We're respecting your rules, so you can respect ours. Good evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Pastor Michael Robinson, and my address is 8865 North Line, Detroit, Michigan. And I first want to start off by saying I really appreciate you and your honesty, Mr. Brandon McCullough, for speaking out and making a stand and being transparent. Even if you have to do it by yourself, we certainly appreciate you. I also want to direct this problem to the entire council. We know that there's a serious problem, and we cannot have top-notch anything here if this young lady who just spoke stood up and said, "I'm not an African-American, but even I have been harassed by the Livonia Police Department." Why would she say, "I'm not an African-American, but it also has happened to me"? Why would she say, "I'm not an African-American, but it also has happened to me"? So is there an underlying message there that it does always supposed to happen to no one but African-Americans? Is my question. Um, and like this young man stood up here and said, "Where is the diversity here"? I see nine council members just present, and all of you all just so happen to be pure as of the same culture. I see one secretary, two officers that's in the front. But where is the diversity here? Where, I mean, uh, I guess I can look around and answer that question myself. I see that. So that's probably why we're running into this problem, because, um, you probably just gonna protect what's in your own house and not going to protect what's outside of your peers in your house. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Um, anyone else? We have, uh, time for one more in our half an hour.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jonathan Akari. Um, I'm just here to continue the story that, uh, Ms. Chrysler was speaking about earlier, because I think it is important that you hear it, uh, to set the stage. Um, uh, she referenced a friend of hers whose father had died, didn't know his mother. A second friend of hers, um, whose mother died, and that sets the scene. Uh, three hours after the second friend's mother passed away, she came to hang out with her friends. They walked to the park, uh, to talk with her and comfort her. Uh, the Livonia Police Department pulls up, uh, flashing their lights in the dark and, uh, leaving the lights on as they approach. Um, the officers approached the, uh, three teenagers, and a female officer shines her flashlight directly into the eyes of the friend whose mother recently passed away. As it turns out, that friend suffers from a form of epilepsy, and she begins to suffer from a seizure, starts to scream. And, um, the officer just simply responds by yelling, "What drugs are you on right now?", instead of providing medical care or first aid. Um, uh, Ms. Chrysler yelled at the officer to stop and tried to explain what was happening with the lights. Uh, instead, the police officers took their time to search the three teenagers. They found an empty glass pipe on the one younger boy whose, uh, father had passed away. Um, and he was arrested for possessing paraphernalia. Um, the male officer questions the other two girls. "Why are you, why are you here?" Uh, Ms. Chrysler's friend begins to cry once her seizure is over and tries to explain that her mother had just passed away. And the officer laughs at her and says that she's lying and tons her for wearing apparently a dare shirt. And, uh, they took them all, um, uh, to the police station. Uh, Ms. Chrysler's mother picked up two of them and the other friend, uh, as I said, had been charged with paraphernalia. Uh, and it's interesting, then, in this case, you had a young man, clearly from a troubled background. His father had passed away. He had a drug addiction problem. His mother wasn't in the picture. And the response to that was to put him into the criminal justice system. Now, uh, that's just one, uh, boy, and he was a, uh, he was a white, uh, white kid. But when you've had 400 years of a systemic attack on one race, and many of them end up in the same circumstances, you're gonna have the similar result disproportionately. I could talk a lot here right now, but I'm just going to point to the data your police department released. Uh, 38% of your arrests were of black men. Over 60% of your arrests were of black people in a city with 4% black population. And all I've heard are excuses. Look at the communities around us. Redford has 20% black population. You're saying that's where they're coming from. Farmington, another 30%. You take Livonia and the surrounding communities, and it's less than 20% black population.
Thank you very much.
Profiling is happening.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right, that will conclude audience communication. Before the meeting, we will have time set aside. If there was anyone who wished to speak before and didn't have an opportunity to do so during this time, they will have an opportunity to do so at the end. Mr. Vice President Barr.
Yeah, first in order of business, I just want to state for the record, Madam Clerk, that, uh, Mr. Donavich had to drop off the call. Uh, conflict where he is with his deployment came up, and he had to leave it, I believe it was 7:29, if you want to note that.
Thank you very much.
He will rejoin us if we can. Um, for those of you who may have been watching our meetings the last couple of months, um, as I have the last three meetings, um, I will do it again here. It's typically my, my personal practice, not always, but typically my practice, that when we have a lot of people here to speak on one thing, if I have something to say, I tend to like to wait to hear from everybody and then speak at the end. And I'll, I'll do the same thing here as I've done at the last three meetings. Um, first of all, there, and I, I mean this with, with all respect, because, because I know the reason, the, the reasons for your passions on this topic are, are, there's, there's many legitimate reasons for that. Um, but, but change in and of itself means nothing without an objective. And, and just to be quite honest with you, I'm, I'm unclear as, as to the objective. I, I, I know we want to end racism. I, I think it's probably safe to say that everybody in this auditorium wants to do that. Racism is, is almost as old as mankind, and it has been a struggle throughout all those years. And we've seen progress, but to say that we've, that there's no racism would, would be foolish. It, of, of course, there's racism. Of course, there's racism in Livonia. I've seen it. Uh, I've seen it with comments. I've seen it with, uh, two neighbors of mine, longtime neighbors of mine, who, who were black. Um, and, and I've, and I've grieved with them over one particular instance that they endured. So, so, I, I'm certainly not denying that racism exists. I'm not denying that racial profiling exists. It, it certainly does. But when it comes to what do we do, we, we have this tendency to want to go get a quick, go to government and get a quick fix. And my question is, what, what is that fix? The intent is, the intent is good, and, and even the objective of wanting to get rid of racism is good. But when it comes to actionable items, my, my, my suggestion to you would be that, that this isn't where that happens. There's, there's no, because when we're talking about racism, we're talking about a heart issue. There's no legislation that can fix a heart issue. We could pass a resolution and pass it unanimously up here tonight saying we decry racism in Liv, excuse me, in Livonia.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
And it will.
Vice President Barr has the floor. One person speaks at a time. Thank you.
It will do nothing, we, we could do that. It will do nothing to change the heart issue. You can't change a heart issue by resolution. So, there's, there's two things, there are two things. There are two things that I think we can do. One is to push back with the truth. And that happens every time you have an opportunity with an individual interaction. You have an opportunity to do that. When I had a gentleman who obviously will remain nameless, but a gentleman who came up to me last summer at a Livonia event and made a comment that very clearly had racial undertones to it as far as what he wanted to see in the city. That was my opportunity, and I did, to tell him, and, and this was in a political environment. It, it was, it was to tell him that I don't condone that. To condemn that, to push back on him, to tell him where he's wrong and lead to a discussion. That doesn't change the city by itself. But that conversation, to push back with the truth, those happening all the time, real conversations, not spectacles, but real conversations, is, that can lead to real change, because what we're looking to do is to change hearts. The second thing that we can do is quite simply to follow the teachings of Christ 2,000 years ago, which is to love your neighbor. I mentioned earlier, and I'll just, I'll, I'll just give you this, this example. An elderly couple that lived next to my wife and I for about a decade. We still keep in touch with them, even though we've both since moved. And this was in Livonia. It was an elderly black couple. They had family from down south, that was about a 12-hour drive away, that would come a couple times a year to visit them. And one day I was over talking to my neighbor, and she said, "Scott", she said, I, I wasn't yet in council at the time, but I was involved within the city, and she knew that. She said, "Scott", she said, "I want to express something to you that happened to us." And she told us how they had had their neighbors coming up. They got there about midnight after a long drive. They're out in the driveway, they're hugging each other, they're carrying suitcases in, having some conversation. And somebody, to this day, we don't know who, somebody called the police on them because of a disturbance in the driveway, and the insinuation was, was racially motivated, okay? She told me, the police came, looked into the situation. She said, "The police couldn't have been any better. They understood what was going on. They apologized for the misunderstanding. They said, 'We had to respond to the call. We didn't know what it was. Clearly, there's nothing going on here. Please have a good night, enjoy your family.'" But she expressed this to me, and, and I did the only thing I could do. I cried with her. That's how you love your neighbor. I can't, again, I can't, I can't fix racism in everybody. We can grieve with those, and grieve, we can come alongside one another. And that's still a special relationship to this day. I know that's not a quick fix. I know that's not something that snaps the fingers and fixes it. But again, we're talking about an issue here that's thousands of years old. It wasn't fixed when the Declaration of Independence declared that all men are created equal. It wasn't fixed when Abraham Lincoln called us to that founding principle. It wasn't fixed when Martin Luther King called us to that principle again. But each one of those things took steps. And I trust that what we're going through as a country right now, even as painful as it is, I trust is another one of those steps. But I, I appreciate the gentleman, I see he's walked out, but the, when he said, you know, "I can't judge any of your hearts", I appreciate him saying that. "I can't judge any of your hearts either." But let's, let's just have some patience with one another. Let's push back with the truth when we have the opportunity, and let's show love to our neighbor. That's how we fix it. And I will tell you, while, while in Livonia, look, we all know that the suburbs, not only in Detroit, but of any major metropolitan in this area, we know our history. We know what was going on in the 50s and 60s and 70s. We know specifically what was going on right here. It's, it's, it's no denying that in many ways, the suburbs grew out of a white flight phenomenon, okay? There was a lot of racism driving that. While I can't prove it to you, I wasn't, I was born in 1980. I wasn't alive in the 60s and 70s, but I suspect there, there probably was some racial profiling going on back then, okay? But I can tell you, if somebody who's 40 years old and has grown up in the city, who's had black neighbors, who's lived in an area where I, it, within Livonia, that where I go shopping, I'm a minority, I can tell you, the Livonia where, I, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but, but the Livonia I see is one that by and large is, is welcoming to everybody. And I will declare right here, right now, at least from my perspective, anybody is welcome here. Anybody that wants to come here and wants to enjoy all the things that we all enjoy with living here, welcome. So.
Excuse me, Ms. Vice President Barr.
And I will, I will, I will finish with, with one last thing. The second neighbor that I referred to earlier at that same house, who was also black, our kids grew up together. I talked to him recently. He's one of a number of people that I've reached out to and had very substantive conversations with on this topic just in the last few weeks. And, and I asked him, because I, I trust him, and I know, I've known him for 15 years. And, and, and this is a man, just so you understand where his biases are, this is a man who's involved with many of the protests, like you are, around Metro Detroit, okay? So that's where he's coming from. He shares many of your views. And I asked him, I said, "Be honest with me", I said, "Have you ever felt uncomfortable", he lived in Livonia for 11 years, he lives in Canton now. I said, "Have you ever felt uncomfortable as a black man living in Livonia"? And he said, "Scott", he said, "To be quite honest with you, no." He said, "I grew up in Detroit. I was always warned about Livonia." He says, "In 11 years of living here, I can't say that I did." He said, "In fact", he said, "You want to know why I coached all my kids' teams? Because I wanted other Livonians to see a black man who was involved with the community and to establish relationships with them." And I will tell you, that's a, that, right there, is another example of someone who is taking meaningful action to speak to the heart issues. That doesn't, that doesn't mean his experience is everybody's experience. As I've said already, I know what happens here. But, but to say that that defines the city. I, I don't, I, I don't feel that that defines the city. And I would even say, even if you do feel it defines the city, you will do more good to define the city going forward by pushing back with the truth and loving your neighbor than you will by shaming the city with a national narrative. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Thank you. All right, uh, with that, we will move on.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you very much. So I think, you know, just to be honest with you, there isn't a perfect way to address this. I understand what you're saying. Largely, I think there is merit to what you're saying in general. Do I know the Livonia Police is a problem more so than other jurisdictions? I don't. The city council up here, we don't oversee the Livonia Police Department. We simply don't. There is a mayor who's the executive of the city, who has taken steps, such as the Human Relations Commission, which we're expecting a lot of things to come out of, who will have dialogue with the groups that share the interests, as you've expressed here tonight, and they will also be taking that back in way of, uh, suggestions, items for reform that needs to be made within the Livonia Police Department. I could sit up here and I could say a whole lot of things. I could express things that I've done in my lives, or my life, things that I know these people up here have done in their lives that show who they are. That's not good enough. I understand that in this circumstance. You asked us to do one thing, right? One of the people who came up here asked for one thing. I'll offer a resolution that outright states racism is not welcome in the city of Livonia. Any prejudice of any kind because of any status is not welcome in Livonia. And I wholeheartedly support that statement, and I expect my colleagues up here do as well, because I know them as individuals. That doesn't solve the problem, but I'll offer it. As a sign of that we're hearing you, that we want to make steps forward, that we want to make some improvement in the situation that people are experiencing. Madam President, that's my motion. Simple, it's very short, but I'll offer it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. We have support.
Support.
Support from, uh, Councilmember White.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Barr.
Appreciate it.
Vice President Barr.
Yeah, appreciate, Mr. Jim, you doing that. Um, when we're voting on a resolution, obviously, and I, I don't have a problem with anything you just said, but when we vote on a resolution, we're putting something in writing, so, um, while I certainly support that, would be happy to support that. If I'm gonna put a vote behind something, I want to know in writing what we're talking about. So, um, is it possible that we could, um, we can do one of two things? You can either take a shot right now at stating exactly what you want said, and it's that short, or if you want to take some time to, to offer a resolution next time, that we have an opportunity to review.
Read what you just said.
Excuse me.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't think we have minutes being taken in that context here. They're being recorded, and they will be indicated later on.
Declare racism as a healthcare crisis.
Excuse me.
Like other city councils have done.
Excuse me, Councilmember Jolly has the floor.
I, you know, public bodies do speak through written orders, through written statements. I will work with the council office and the city attorney's office to come up with a formal resolution that will be offered at the next regular meeting. Um, but that is my indication. I have support for that, and I'd ask that that be placed on the agenda.
Thank you. That will be on the agenda of, of August 5th, at the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Councilmember White.
Just in response to some of the things that have been said tonight, um, and, and ever since this became an issue that has been brought to our city councils and other city councils across the United States, listening to these stories, and I believe my job as a city council member, first and foremost, is to listen to what you have to say. And some of the things that I hear pain me very deeply. And it's not something that I listen to in an evening and go home and forget about. I think about these things in, in conjunction with, my approach to life in general is to obey the golden rule and act in accordance with, with other people as you would like to be treated. And so, as you tell your stories, I am very, very, very deeply, um, thinking about these issues and what we can do as a city to help move our nation forward. There are some limitations that we have as a city council. We're a legislative body. We're not the administrator, administrator of the city like the mayor is and in charge of, uh, policies for the police in terms of the kind of training that they need or, or should be supplemented with. But we are certainly, all of us up here are listening to you. And I just want you all to take that message back. We want this to be a welcoming community. We would love diversity on the council. We all know what it takes to run as a city council member. It's a lot of effort. It's a lot of work. It's a lot, quite frankly, a lot of money. All of us hate that part, the fundraising part. We would love to see people within the community of Livonia step and say, step up and say, "Yes, I'd like to be a part of this body. I may be a minority, but I would like to, you know, do the same sort of, take the same sort of steps that all of us have taken to get to where we are." And I know, I, I believe all my colleagues would feel the same way. So, um, keep, keep the dialogue going. We are listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I also, I, I agree fully with Councilmember Jolly, and I will be supporting this resolution. I do want to kind of reiterate that it's a resolution. It's fine and dandy, but this is where I look at the positive collaboration. You know, let's see if what we could do to actually push things forward and work together. Without that, it's just gonna keep on having opposition like this. So this is a big step, and we'll craft the, uh, resolution and, uh, probably. And probably next meeting, this will be voted on. So again, I think it's a great step, but I definitely want to keep the positive collaboration going. And I hope you guys can agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will move forward with our consent agenda. Items 1 through 6 are on the consent agenda. They're voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they are any less important than any other items on the agenda, but rather that they were determined not to be controversial in nature when they were covered at our study meeting of, I believe that was July 6th.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Support.
Support from Vice President Burr. And would you please take the vote, Madam Clerk, on the consent agenda?
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich back on, do we know?
He's not.
He's not.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Burr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved by all the members here this evening. With that, we go ahead with, we'll proceed with unfinished business, beginning with meetings of the committee. Item number 7 is a report out on our Finance and Budget Committee meeting as of June 24th, 2020. And Vice President Burr is the chair of that committee, and he will report out on that meeting of June 24th. Vice President.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So chairing this committee is really one of the great privileges of this role on council for me. And when we're talking about finance and budget, we're really talking about the crux of what this body is responsible for. We did hold our annual meeting on June 24th. This is the meeting where we do an audit review of the previous year. Committee members' presence, where myself, Mr. Donavich, and Mr. Jolly. We also had President, Council President McIntyre, Councilmember Toy, Councilmember White, Assistant Attorney Leo Neville, Director of Finance Mike Slater, Chief Accountant Connie Complah, City Treasurer Linda Shields, City Clerk Susan Nash, and then a number of representatives from Plant Moran, who does our audit. The meeting convened at 7:31 PM. The number one topic was the topic of our annual audit report.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that if people would like to talk, that you take your conversation out into the lobby so we can continue our report out. Thank you.
We had a lengthy agenda tonight of that meeting, but the mediest one and our real purpose, our biggest purpose for me in there was the topic of the annual audit report. And Plant Moran presented the annual audit report for the fiscal year ending November 30th, 2019. Livonia was again given an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the best result we could hope for. Number of audit documents presented and discussed, which I'll deal with in a minute. But a few highlights from that for those who are watching and those who may be interested. No difficulties from the city in performing the audit. There were zero accounting register errors for the second straight year. I love noting that because our county, our finance department deserve a lot of praise for that. We're talking about a city that has, Mike Slater's back there, he can signal me if I'm wildly off, but more than 8,000 accounting journal entries every year. And to have more than 8,000 entries and not have a single error in entry is incredible. So just speaks to the diligence of our finance staff. In the general fund, a few highlights, because we go into a lot of depth in that meeting, but I'll keep this high level. We had our highest revenue ever last year at 61.6 million. That was a 4% increase from the previous year. That's just thanks to the economy we've had the last number of years and we're seeing in our property values. Revenue exceeded expenditures by 1.8 million. That's good. We spent 2.6 million less than what we had budgeted. The fund balance has recovered from a low of 6.2 million back in 2008, at the time of the first recession, to 14.9 million on November 30th of last year, while we've been making required contributions to the pension plan and setting aside funds for our VIBA post-employment healthcare system. The fund balance's percentage of expenditures is 24.5%, which is very impressive relative to other communities. The recommended minimum for that is 16.7%. We're at 24.5%. This is a quote from our auditors. They said, "It's a testament to the fiscal discipline of this city." Our unrestricted net position, which is a percentage of budget available for discretionary spending, is at 22%. We've talked about this in the past, but it's important for our residents to understand that that is lower than comparable communities. And that's simply a function of the fact that a high percentage of our budget is restricted by millages. We have a Parks and Recreation Village. We have a Public Safety Village. We have a Roads Village, et cetera, et cetera. And those millages determine how that money must be spent. We don't have discretion over that. And so there's a pro and a con to that. The con is at times is we have less flexibility in what to do with our money. But the pro of that is our residents have, that's providing accountability for us and they know where their money is going. Personally, I'm a fan of our approach. COVID-19, as you've probably heard, is likely to cause significant future reductions to state shared revenue to Act 51 road funding, recreation fees, investment income and water and sewer revenues. So this is not going to be as rosy of a picture next year, but thanks to the sound financial management we've had leading up to this point, I'm highly confident we're going to be able to handle that. In the area of long-term liabilities, our pension system's 95% funded. We contributed .4 million in 2019. We're expecting to contribute 1.4 million in 2020. And if the stock market doesn't recover, that number's not going to keep, it's not going to turn around. It's going to keep going up, I'm afraid. And the retiree healthcare side, we're 55% funded, which is obviously way short of what we want, which is 100%, but above 40% statewide, just looking at all the factors, is considered healthy. So while we have work to do there, it's manageable. We contributed 4.1 million in 2019, which was .1 million more than required. Some of you may remember, we had an unexpected windfall last year that we sent that way to help further fund that. And we're expecting to have to contribute twice that this year and beyond in order to fully fund that VIBA within 28 years, which is our target. So that's a high-level update from that. And based on that, the committee recommends to receive and place on file for the information of the council, the letter from Plant Moran dated May 14th, 2020. We recommend to receive and place on file for the information of the council, the federal awards supplemental information from Plant Moran dated May 14th. Also to receive and place on file the information, I'm sorry, the financial report with supplemental information dated November 30th. I'm sorry, for the fiscal year ending November 30th, dated May 14th, 2020. And finally, to receive and place on file for information of the council, the audit presentation that we all had that night from Plant Moran. This is a standing resolution, will remain in committee. Now, I told you we had a lengthy agenda that night, and for the record, I need to go through this, and we're going to have to do a lot of procedural votes here. But we, on the finance committee, we had a lot of items going back 25 years, many of which were irrelevant, many, some of which we weren't even entirely sure why they were there. And they just sit on that agenda until we do something with them. And so we took the opportunity this night just to do some house cleaning and to formally move some of these out of that committee. And so I'm going to run through those now. The first one we considered was a resolution to, it was entitled, "Various Subjects Regarding City Vehicles for Report and Recommendation." After some discussion that we had on that, we did determine that we did want to leave that in committee at this time. The third item we looked at was fleet replacement program for fire and rescue apparatus. This is something we're familiar with. Chief Hevner refers to it often when he comes to us to make purchases that are in keeping with that program. And so with that in mind, the committee recommends an adoption of a resolution, I'm talking too fast, to take no further action. I'd look for that resolution at this time. Do we have to have an offer for that? Or did I just offer it and wait a second? Do we know?
Still moved.
Okay, thanks.
Madam President, if I may for a moment.
Please, Councilmember.
If we could direct this question to the city attorney, just because there are so many of these tonight, I think it might be quite possible we could offer them all as one resolution to close them out.
That'd be good.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. So when we do that, clear me up, do we have to have a motion and a second here for all those in this meeting before we vote?
Let me say yes.
Do it as one.
Do it as one group.
I understand doing it as one.
I would suggest humbly that if he states them on the record, we could offer one resolution at the end to remove all of the items he stated from committee and then have a second on that and then vote on that at one time. I think having multiple motions and seconds makes it so that we could not have one motion, to be honest with you. So that would be my suggestion, just to do it as one.
All I would say is if that's what's more practical for council, there's no problem about doing it that way.
Okay.
Just so I clear, so I have the notes here correctly. So the ones that are going to be staying in, we're going to vote on as one. And if we're going to be reporting...
We don't, we don't need to vote on the one that's staying in.
It's just the ones that are removed.
But the rest of these, the committee's recommendation is no further action. So what Councilman Jolly's suggesting, and I appreciate his suggestion, is that I read all of those off at once, and then we almost treat it like a consent agenda, but we'll have one motion and one second for all those items together. I guess the risk we run is that somebody has a problem with that, but we don't think that's high probability tonight. Okay, so I'll just read those off. Thanks, Jim. That's a great suggestion. So a fleet replacement program for fire and rescue, I already mentioned. The next item was renewal of the city's liability and property insurance coverage. This was an old item from, I think, 20 years ago. The recommendation is no further action. The next item, the subject to creating various financial proposals and alternatives to aid struggling properties for report and recommendation. This was also recommended for no further action. Next one was subject of a plant administrator for the city's 401A Defined Contribution Retirement Plan. Again, this was one that was for a time and a place at another time. Not really relevant at this point. Plant recommendation is take no further action. Next item, the subject of how the new healthcare bill will affect the city of Livonia. That's clearly not relevant at this point. That was speaking to Obamacare when it was first planned, and there's nothing we need to do with that. So the recommendation is to take no further action. The next item was subject to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. Recommendation there is to take no further action. If there's something specific related to Plymouth Road Development Authority in the future, that can be put back into committee. Next item was subject to the Plymouth Road Development Authority 2011 Annual Report. Pretty clear from that title, that's no longer relevant. Recommendation is to take no further action. Next item, subject of a review of the previous 10 years' road millage for report and recommendation. Again, that was for another time and place. When that millage comes up again, we'll have an opportunity to consider that. Recommendation is to take no further action. Subject to proposed, the next item, subject to the proposed policy regarding the appropriate level and use of the general fund balance for report and recommendation. The adoption, we recommend adoption of a resolution for no further action. Next item was subject to practices concerning water billing, including waiving interest and penalties. This again was, as we looked into it, was a specific issue at a specific time. The question was, I think it was before 2010. The question was answered at that time. There's, the recommendation is no further action. And then finally, the subject of internal audits and/or periodical reviews of departments and/or activities deemed of high risk for further discussion. This is one of those things that had a specific purpose at one time. Again, if there's another specific purpose, we could put it in a committee. But this, as written, the committee recommends in resolution to take no further action. So with that, I would, I guess, it would be appropriate to have a motion. I guess I'll pass it back to you, Madam President, and it'd probably be appropriate for a motion to handle those.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, please.
I would like to offer the motion of having no further action on items 7B through 7M as they are listed on the agenda.
Support.
Support from Councilmember White. And if there's any comment, just...
7C.
I thought 7C.
Oh, I'm corrected. 7C through 7M.
Councilmember White, is that, you still second?
Yes.
All right, if there's no discussion on council or anyone in the audience on this agenda item, Madam Clerk, if you would please go ahead and take the vote on no further action on the items as offered by Councilmember Jolly.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Burr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye, and the resolution to take no further action on those items is passed. All right, and with that, we will continue with unfinished business, and that's item number 8. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended. This comes just from the Department of Law to add Section 225 and amend Section 230 of Chapter 04 Streets and Sidewalks of Title 12 to clarify the types of structures, specifically mailboxes, which may be installed in the easement or right-of-way along Livonia streets and roads.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'll offer a first reading on that matter.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly has offered first reading on that. Item number 9 is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, number 543 is amended. This too comes from the Department of Law, submitted by Bellagio Homes, to rezone the northern 300.62 feet of property located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Merriman Road and Osmos Avenue, 316707 Mile Road in the southeast quarter of Section 3, from RUF Rural Urban Farm Minimum Half-Acre Lot to R11 Family Residential 60 by 120-foot lots. Council?
Madam President, I'll offer a first reading on that matter.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly has offered first reading on that. We move on to item number 10. This is a request to approve quarterly budget adjustments. This comes just from the Department of Finance for the first and second quarter of the 2020 fiscal year budget. There is new data on that from the Office of the Mayor dated July 15th regarding the 2020 census update and the Michigan Municipal League Grant be received and placed on file. However, Councilmember Toy, who's not here this evening, has respectfully requested that this item be removed from the agenda and moved to the agenda, the regular meeting agenda of August 5th. And I will do that. So we will move that, Madam Clerk, to the August 5th agenda. Thank you. Item number 7 is a request to authorize expenditure. This comes from the Public Service Division to enable payment to DeAngelo Brothers for the emergency water main replacement on Suri Road through the DPW yard from budgeted funds. And this would allow council to authorize an expenditure in the amount now to exceed $257,970.80 from the water.
Same moved.
Second.
White and seconded by Jolly. Any discussion, any comment from the audience on this item?
Madam President, if I may for a moment.
I'm sorry.
So I had asked for 11 to be on the regular agenda just due to the sheer amount of money here. Typically, we do have similar emergency repair requests that have to be paid for after the work is done. Those are typically far lower amounts of money here, but this was quite an extensive project. So I asked for some extra time just to make sure that all of the paperwork and everything was in order. I did have a chance to speak to the Director of DPW in regards to this as well. I think it makes sense, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Movis on Shrewsbury. And I just, I wanted to understand. I know tonight was a vote, and we've not been giving a lot of opportunity to speak. In the planning meetings, we were told that's not the time. When you go to city council, you'll have time. City council, we have emailed from the Zoom. We don't feel that our concerns are being heard or listened to by the city council. Just, it's been, it's been stated.
With respect to what, Ms. Movis?
We're on number 9, Bellagio. So it's, all of the, all of the residents from the subdivision have voiced various concerns, and it has been kind of stated.
Madam President, just a minute. I don't want to cut you off, but just as a point of order, we're on item number 11 at the moment. But I might suggest if she can stay there, maybe we can give her an opportunity to speak, even though we already handled number 9 when you were with us.
I raised my hand.
I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry. If you would let us finish this item, then we would be very, very happy. And I especially want to give you an opportunity because I know we exchanged some emails about the meeting being in person tonight. So thank you. Just bear with us just for a moment. All right, item number, item number 11. And Jim finished his comments. I think I had called for audience communication on 11. There was none on item number 11. And did we have, we had, we had a resolution offered?
CWJJ.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, then, and we were just calling for the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on item number 11?
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the the emergency expenditure is approved.
Madam President?
Yes.
I believe in consulting with Councilwoman White, I think I needed to offer a motion to suspend the rules in order to what we had talked about. So I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules.
We have support. Support from White. And we suspended the rules, and we will now return to, pardon me? Oh, we do, we need a vote to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the the rules are suspended. Ms. Movis?
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, and I'm sorry that I didn't see you during audience communication.
No problem. So on item number nine, Bellagio, the neighbors have voiced a lot of concerns. The the way it was addressed by City Council was, this was the way it was supposed to be initially when they first looked at it. Things do change, and I don't think anyone on City Council has given that an opportunity to be really looked at or heard, listening to all of the citizens' concerns of that properties, new properties going in. So I, we've been kind of told, well, in planning, you could talk later, you know, in City Council. We talked to City Council. We did have it, but it was basically, well, yep, you know, we drove through the street. We think it would be fine to, to, you know, bulldoze through and add, you know, add this thorough street so that more cars and traffic can go through there. I don't think any, you know, consideration to all of the children that are in the neighborhood and on that street, as well as all of the construction, the noise, people working from home, the wildlife that goes through there that will be disrupted. And there's very little of that left in the city to have all of that. And I, you know, every meeting, it's while we're voting, we're going to be voting, you're going to have time to talk. And it doesn't seem like that's happening, it just keeps moving forward. And our concerns, I don't believe, have been taken seriously by the City Council members. So I would ask that you do, each, every one of you, go back and look at those emails that were sent in, the voices that were, we did speak on some of those Zoom calls, and various people did that. Most of the people I know did not show up today because COVID's concerns, not having that option of coming here in person or having it on Zoom. That's not very fair in these times, that you should consider doing dual purposes. And again, I would ask that you listen to our concerns.
I, just on the not dual, right now, we don't have the technical capability to do that. We just don't. So it's, it's, it's no desire to silence voices. We have to do it one way or the other. And and as I indicated in my email, a lot of thought and planning went into doing this in person tonight. It wasn't a decision taken lightly, and believe it or not, there were many people who were urging us to go back to in-person meetings. So it's, you know, it was absolutely no attempt to disenfranchise anyone. But we understand your point about concerns and people coming out.
Yeah, it should definitely be looked at for both options for future, given the situation, and the times are changing as well. So again, I would just ask each and every one of you to look at all of the concerns that were submitted. And just because something was initially, a lot of things have changed, and something the way it was originally doesn't mean that it has to go forward that way. So please, take the time to look at that before you just keep pushing this through and letting them get away with, the builders getting away with things that they've gotten away with by, you know, doing favors for the city. So, thank you.
I just, and some of my colleagues may like to address this. As far as just pushing forward and ignoring, we had a public hearing on this.
And a regular.
And we had, we had a discussion, a regular meeting on this. And we've received many emails. I responded to a number of the emails, I'm sure my colleagues have as well. And so I'm sorry, you have the sense that things haven't been paid attention to. And I'm sure some people like to speak for themselves, but but I have paid a lot of attention, and we've, we've given it a lot of consideration and reflection, so.
It was especially evident in the planning committee where eyes were being rolled, people were getting up and moving away and not paying any attention.
You meant the planning commission?
In the planning, definitely, in the planning. Somewhat more, little, not as much here on the City Council meetings, but definitely in the planning meetings. So that was that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I, do, I know Mr. Terramina would like to speak. Councilmember Jolly?
Well, I would just offer, well, I offered a first reading tonight. If you notice, we did not vote on it tonight. We would only vote after a second reading. So procedurally, this is taking a step forward, but it is by no means done. I will indicate, like my colleagues did say, we did have a public hearing. We did listen to many callers from the street, both streets, actually. I think we've, we have given this our due diligence in regards to the aspect of what is proposed to have gone in there in the past, what is being proposed currently, and what you've all expressed. We have heard you, okay? And the vote will be sometime later on. I can't say that it will be at the next meeting, Mr. Terramina may know that. But we did not vote tonight, so you still have the opportunity to express your opinions through email and elsewise.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Terramina, I'm, would you, we have another.
This same topic.
That's fine.
Okay, and then we'll go to Mr. Terramina. Good evening.
My name's Michael Hankert. I've been on the last couple of calls that were on the, do you mind if I take this off?
No, not at all. We had, I, maybe you weren't here when I expressed, people are free to take it off at the, at the podium.
Okay, thank you. So I went on the last couple of calls, and the last one that we had last month, I guess, just to dovetail onto Lisa's comments here. I also had the concerns that I don't, I mean, I know you made the comment that, Mr. Jolly, you made the comment that it's been looked at. Madam President, you indicated that you've looked at this seriously. The problem is, is when I'm on these calls, and we had the Zoom meetings the last time, I look at it, and the discussions that were made from the group here were very minimal, no pros, no cons. We're just going to go ahead and move forward with this. It was a quick vote that happened last time, when you did choose to vote, to go through that. And it followed up after the discussion that was on the rezoning for the Taco Bell over at Six and Farmington. And the concern that I have is, Councilman McCullough, he had the concerns. In fact, he'd made the drive through our neighborhood, based on prior discussions a couple of months ago. And it'd be nice to have that through, but again, we're the ones that live there. We're the ones that have the, the concerns, the children that are out playing, you know, the urgency of, you know, taking care of that, and all the wildlife and things that are going on in the area. So the concern that I have is, there was a lot of discussion after. In fact, there, you voted against the rezoning of the Taco Bell, but then there was subsequent discussion that showed like they really cared. And I'm not saying that, I mean, it's, you got to be on the board to get what you're looking for, but it, the perception is, at least from me, that you looked out for each of your own, but you got 20-some, 20, 25 people in a neighborhood that are concerned about the streets and how they're going to be joined. And there was, wasn't a lot of discussion. So there might have been a lot behind the scenes, and I'm not saying there wasn't, but it sure didn't come off that way on the, the Zoom meetings that we had.
I know that Vice President Barr would like to speak, but I, I would like to take a point of privilege and just address this. I, I'm not sure what your comment means about one of your own or one of your board, but let me say something. The Taco Bell zoning was denied. Mr. Pastor's a former, the petitioner's a former council member. So, you know, this idea that somebody.
Well, I know it was designed, denied, but it, I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead. I mean, go ahead.
You know, that, that we take care of our own. The second thing is, public discussion is not allowed outside of public meetings. Anytime there are more than three of us present, it's an open meeting. So there are never discussions with the majority of council members. And and even, we, we are very careful to restrict our discussions about voting, about voting issues to public meetings. And we've, just because there wasn't a lot of discussion, doesn't mean that we're not listening. And we had a, we had a long public hearing on that, we've received a lot of information. I can't speak for everyone, I'm familiar with those streets and that area and have driven them both. So, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that you had that impression, that it wasn't considered, but I can tell you it wasn't. And now I, I know that Vice President Barr would like to speak.
Can I comment before?
I'd like Vice President Barr, and then if you have.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm sorry you had that perception, I really am. I, I know I've, I came out of that meeting, I remember, my, my recollection is we had a longer discussion on that than I actually thought we would, because there were a number of neighborhoods that need, neighbors that needed to speak. And I know there's a number, I don't remember if it was you or not, but I know there's a number of neighbors that I've had conversations with either via email or phone call. So I, I feel like we've heard the concerns. And, and I feel like we've gotten the opportunity to speak, and if we haven't, I'm glad you have the opportunity tonight. Because we certainly want you to have that. On this topic, just to be perfectly candid with you, if you felt that it went quickly, and I, I don't know whether it did or didn't, but I'll just speak for myself, I, I actually didn't see this one as a real difficult one. I, I heard all the, the concerns, but like the Taco Bell you talked about, there, there were a number of complexities with that, that at least for me, made it a much more difficult decision. I happen to be on the, the losing side of that vote, but, but, but that one was a lot more difficult for me. This one, you know, you, you say you live there, but, but you're not the property owner of this property. So we have a petitioner from the property owner of this property for what he would like to do with his property. And what he would like to do with it is, is not only consistent with what we would typically see in an area like that, and is compatible with the city, but in this case, a quick glance at the way that neighborhood is laid out, not only for us, but for anybody who's ever moved into there, makes it, makes it very clear what the intent had been. So just, I, I know you may not like the answer. I always tell people, you may not like my decisions, but I'm always going to try to be transparent so you understand what my rationale is. And I'll just tell you, on this one, it, the decision to me seemed relatively clear-cut, so.
Okay, so can I just, as you're going forward and making your decisions on how the planning takes place, and I'll probably, you'll see me at future meetings here. Going to get a little more involved, but the, I guess the question is, instead of knocking those two streets together, can you go with the street that's off Seven Mile and run a street down the middle that would get back to the locations? And kind of keep the.
Even if we could do that?
You could.
The owner of that property, no, we can't, because we don't own that property, and he's not petitioned for that.
Okay.
So.
Well, we, we could wait till that happens, just like they waited for this one, so, just a thought.
Thank you.
I just want to make my point, and I guess that's where I'm at. And again, I wasn't trying, I, I, I wasn't trying to make a formal accusation about anyone on the board. So don't take it that way.
Nothing was taken as an accusation? Just wanted you to understand and, you know, explain that your perception that people just, we railroaded it through.
It, it seemed to go just slam through without a lot of discussion?
Didn't square with, with the discussion and deliberation that this has been given. And so I'm sorry, that was your perception. I think Mr. Terramina would like to.
Just briefly, Madam Chair, the next step in the process will be the review of the site condominium plan. We're reviewing that paperwork right now. There's a good chance that it'll be held in August, the meeting. That'll be a planning commission meeting, and more than likely, that will be via Zoom. So I just want the residents to know, they can call the planning department, and we'll give them the details of when and how that meeting will be conducted. And we should know that within the next few days.
Okay, so call the, call the planning department, you know, within the, I'd say, give it probably to the beginning of next week, the end of this week. And they'll let you know when, when the next planning commission will be. It won't come back to us for a vote until we have the, until we have what we call the site plan, and until that's been through Planning Commission. So there'll be additional opportunities to be involved. And when you said you were coming back, and I said, "Good," I meant that very sincerely. You know, citizen engagement is always appreciated and valued.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, at this time, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone that did not have an opportunity to address the council at the beginning of the meeting and would like to do, and would like to do so now, now is an opportunity to do so. And I'll, you have, good evening, and I'll remind everyone of the three-minute time limit. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Alexandria. I'm from Livonia Citizens, caring for Black Lives. And today, I'm going to tell you the story about my brother and his experiences with the Livonia Police. He is a Redford resident. I graduated from pharmacy tech school, and I got my first real job in Livonia. Within a span of three months, I've been followed home by Livonia Police more than once. When I was followed home from work, I remember getting in my car and driving only a couple of miles, and I noticed a police car behind me. I thought to myself, that's odd, I just got on the road not too long ago. It was getting dark outside, and they had their headlights on, but they continued to follow me. And once we got to Redford, they cut their headlights off. It made me wonder if they were trying to hide. As I got closer home, I turned down a residential street, but I didn't turn down the one I usually do, because I wanted to see if the cops would turn down there as well, to really see if they were following me. I waited before getting in my car, because I didn't want them to shoot me. I texted my sister when I got to the house. They, they followed me to the house. My sister came outside, stood in the door, just in case they tried something, so that she would be a witness. After about five minutes, the police car drove off. And that's just not the only time it happened. It happened another time. And this time, it happened when he, he pulled up to the house, the police car parked behind him, hid behind another car, trying to hide once again. But this time, he started recording, which footage he still has to this day. His thought was, maybe I should record, because if they're, they're crazy enough to follow me home more than once, then they're going to harm me. My little brother has never been in trouble in his life. He's never, not, like, he, he's never done anything. He's, he's just trying to go to school, get a job, and be a normal kid. But he can't do that, because of the Livonia Police Department. And don't whisper while I'm talking. You need to hear this, both of y'all.
Excuse me, excuse me.
How upset would you be if you were me?
Excuse me. We, we were, Mr. Barr, Vice President Barr, let me know that he wanted to respond to your, your comments.
Okay, go ahead.
No, when you're finished.
I'm sorry, you can finish. And I, we'll, we'll give you some extra time for this here, so.
Please continue.
So my brother has never been in trouble in his life. He often wonders, what, what information that they have on him? What are they holding? What are they waiting on? Are they going to come back? Was it the same police officer? And he also feels that the police don't want who really committed the crime. They want black bodies to just throw in jail. So when people say the police force is top-notch, that sounds ridiculous. It is ridiculous. And when people say, I know a black person, oh, my neighbor, he's never experienced racism, just the one? That means nothing to me. How many years has it been? I heard someone talking about patience, too. Have patience. How much more patience do you want me to have? How, how many years has it been? When did this all start? Let's go back to 1619. You want to start there?
We, we gave you another 30 minutes for the time that.
I'm done, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just a comment, thank, first of all, thank you.
Excuse me.
Sincerely, thank you for sharing. And by the way, I.
Yes, yes, we, we have, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. We have rules in the council meetings. And the rules need to be enforced for the benefit of everyone. There, there is one person talking, and maybe I, I, I should have made that clear at the beginning of the meeting. Excuse me. Mr. Vice President Barr?
First of all, I apologize, President McIntyre, you're trying to listen to that. I should have waited until she was done to tell you I wanted to speak, so that.
I know you want to make sure you.
That confusion there was my fault. And, and so I said, I, I don't think it was explicitly said. It is, it is standard for us to ask for no applause during a council meeting, so that's nothing unique to tonight. Sincerely, thank you for sharing that. It's, it's not the first story I've heard from that. I shared the one story earlier. I've, I've had a number of conversations. Your, your story certainly is not unique, okay? And it, it takes a lot of courage for you to come here and, and share that. What I would recommend for you in a situation like that, and I'm going to take this opportunity to, to say this to you and for anybody else who's listening who may experience that, if they experience that again, please, call, call the Police Department with a complaint. They are handled. If you look at that website that was just published, they detailed every single complaint of, I believe, 2019. Maybe they went further back than that, I don't recall offhand. I did read through all of them, I just don't know what years. As I was reading through those, I, I recognized, I recognized all of them, because most, if not all of them, this council has seen the body camera footage from them. Because when they've done those investigations, the police chief, to be proactive, without us even knowing about them, he comes to us to say, "I want you to see the body cam footage of this, and I want to explain to you the results of our investigation." I can tell you, many times in those conversations, it's, it's pretty clear what happened, and you can see on that website what the results of those investigations were. I will tell you that, that there are times that, that we do ask questions, and, and there is an opportunity for accountability. So I just, that, that, when we talk about action, for, for you or for anybody else that does that, please, please do hold us accountable, and do that by calling in a complaint. They will be investigated. We invested a quarter million dollars in this city a few years ago to outfit every single one of our police officers with body cam footage, body cameras, which they are required to have on. So, so we have those. So, thank, thank you again for sharing that. I just wanted to give you that suggestion for when that happens again, or hopefully it doesn't happen again.
It probably will, but, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly?
Just to offer just a little bit more explanation of what Mr. Barr just stated here. One of the items that we have done as a council is, we did get body cams for every officer. And he, he, Mr. Barr's not often wrong on math.
Maybe I am.
I think we actually spent a million dollars on getting body cams. And the reason we did that was so there would be a factual videotape to investigate. When complaints are registered, there is a procedure to go back and look at the body cam footage that is kept on a secure server that is not accessible by anybody other than the people who are able to review that, which is basically the administration of the Police Department, people charged specifically with that. There's no capability for someone to go in there and deny something or delete something when it's recorded. And I mean, that's, that is something, unfortunately, oftentimes, that's, that's the best we can do in regards to what the police officers are doing on the street. are doing on the street. So, you know, there's videotape. If you think something is amiss, if something has been a wrong, make those complaints, and then the body cam footage will be investigated. Also, along with the body cams, we've had for 20 years, police cam, or, excuse me, dash cam videos from the police cars. And that's also stored in the same way, and that's also reviewed when there's complaints. So, as Mr. Barr stated, make the complaints, and there is something that will be reviewed. It's not just, "He said, he said," or whatever circumstance. There's something actually to review, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Margaret Flurry. I'm a member of the Black Student Union at School Craft College. And I would just like to say, ooh, sorry, I would just like to say two things. One, I feel like you all, in your entirety, are missing the point. The issue is the police department and its blatant corruption that you may not experience yourselves, but we as civilians do. We do. And two, I would like to say that your camaraderie is very heartwarming, but it is a spit in the face of our faces, because we can't sit around and laugh when we are out here fighting for our lives to be treated with respect and like humans. The fight on its own is dehumanizing, because we shouldn't have to do this. It's intrinsic to be valued as a person when you are born a person. Am I wrong? No. And Mr. Barr, you're a very polite man. You very, very much so are. But I would like to say that your spiel at the very beginning, right after we all were done speaking, was racist and privileged in its entirety. We get it, you have black friends. You requesting that we love one another, that in order to combat racism, we must be patient with love. We are sick and tired of it. We have not been treated like humans since the conception of America. We have never been treated as people, black people at all. We have not been treated as people. My counterparts and I refuse to be up here to simply be patient when we are requesting equity and humanity, a term you all clearly lack any comprehension of, given that you are very dismissive to the blatant facts and to the officers that are employed by the Livonia Police Department, and you are just like completely ignoring the fact by requesting, not even reading, taking the time to read the signs. I find that you saying and being very dismissive towards the signs, again, another spit in the face. But might I add, that I have quite a few suggestions pertaining towards what exactly you can do, instead of idly sit by and pray and speak circles around what we really want, and what we want is change, that you all are clearly capable of. You are members of the city council. You have seats. You have power. Utilize it. You say you recognize our humanity, but do you really? Do you really? Do you genuinely hear yourself speak? You are people in power. You can do something about it. You have connections. You have jurisdiction. Defund the police. Hold officers accountable. Allow their records to be released and available to the public. After all, there's nothing to hide, correct? Disperse the funds allocated by the excessive and obese police budget, and disperse said funds into sensitivity training and cultural classes in schools, from kindergarten to 12, K through 12. I'm a young voice. I myself was born in 2000, January 7th. I've experienced an immense amount of racism in just my 20 short years of life. And yes, it is peers in accordance with parents. Disperse those funds into the disenfranchised...
Thank you very much for your comments.
Of course.
This three minutes. And, but I would like to just reiterate something that was said tonight. The police department does not report to the city council. The city council has no jurisdiction. You wanted to talk a lot about our responsibilities and our, what we do. We have no jurisdiction over the police department. The police department reports to the mayor. All police policies are under the oversight and overview of the mayor. The city council and the city budgets have nothing to do with the school budgets. Excuse me. Excuse me. You know, you've all asked for respect tonight, and we're working hard to be respectful as we work every meeting to be respectful.
I think your disregard toward these issues that we consistently bring up...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
No, I'm just saying that you've spoken, your time is up, but...
I don't really, okay, all right.
The school district budget is completely separate from the city budget.
You have connections, do you not?
We have nothing to do with the school board budget.
You have connections, do you not?
I've said my piece, and your time's up, so thank you for your comments this evening.
Utilize your powers. I hope you all are able to sleep at night, really. I hope you are.
All right, excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's John Hillers. I would like to echo, I'm also with Livonia Citizens Caring About Black Lives. I would like to echo the thoughts of everyone else up here and ask you, I know you don't like questions, but I will ask a rhetorical question. When the next video on CNN, MSNBC, the national news, is an LPD officer beating up a black man or killing a black man, are all of you going to know or feel like you did what you could to stop it? When you talk about sending complaints to the police, and 14 out of 17 complaints are considered invalid, how is that helping? When 83.5% of men ticketed in Livonia are black men out of a population of 5%?
Excuse me, that was, excuse me.
That's racial profiling. I thought this was my time.
Excuse me. That was an incorrect statistic that the mayor's...
That's correct.
Excuse me. The mayor's Director of Administrative Service called the attention to, I believe that was in the Free Press story, and the number was corrected to 39%. I believe 39% is the correct number, not 80%.
Okay, 39% out of a population of 5? When 60% of males arrested are black, when black females are given hundreds of more tickets a year than white females, how can you sit there and just say you're powerless? Good for you, Mr. Barr. You have a black friend. Someone stole my line. And you might not have any ideas of how to stop racial profiling, but other city councils do. There are systems you can put in place. Yes, you might not be able to stop an officer from having racial thoughts in his heart, but you can stop the damage he's doing to black people every single day in the city. You can hold him accountable, and you can hold the chief of police accountable for the officers that he has under him. When you allow him to retain officers who are following black men to other cities, in and out of stores for four hours, then appellate court judge said the case should be put back to the courts, because this officer clearly violated this man's Fourth Amendment rights, and you allow him to stay on the force and get a promotion? That is not taking responsibility. Like I said, maybe you're powerless. Maybe there's just nothing you can do, but I highly doubt that, considering you are able to get body cameras. And if you're able to get body cameras, you're able to get systems in place to track the traffic stops and whether or not black people are being racially profiled. Well, not whether or not, because they obviously are. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rai. You need to know my address. It's not important. I am the Vice President of the Black Student Union at School Craft College. I am one of the cute protestors. I am a cute black student who wastes gas and money to go to school in your city. And my dad is a pastor. He believes and worships the same God you do. And since you quoted Christ, I wanted to breathe something. Then God said, "Let us make man in our own image according to our likeness." They will rule over the fish and of the sea and the birds of the sky and the livestock, the whole earth and the creatures that crawl on the earth. So God created man in his own image. And he created him in the image of God. He created them, male and female. He created them together. Isn't it beautiful that the God that you claim to worship created everybody in this room, and you sit here and you say that there is really nothing you can do? I'm supposed to be okay with that, though. I'm supposed to be okay with that. I, my siblings go to school here. That's my brother and my sister. And there are people here who I know, who live here, who have been racially profiled. My aunt is a judge. She doesn't even live here, and she knows that this city is racist at heart. It has been racist since the beginning of America, literally. How do you not know that during the 50s and the 60s and the 70s, that it was racist? My grandmother is 77 years old, and she can recount a time when she had to crawl home during the Detroit riots. We are not any less racist than the city that George Floyd was killed in, the city that Ahmaud Albury was killed in, the city that Breonna Taylor was killed in, the city that Sean Reed was killed in. We are not any less racist. And for you to sit here and say that there is nothing you can do is a lie. Just because it has not been recorded does not mean it won't happen. And you mean to tell me that it hasn't been recorded? Come on now, we're in 2020. There are videos coming out that were recorded years ago that the cops buried. Now, maybe, maybe, maybe you're not ahead of the police department, but you're ahead of this city. You run this city, don't you? There is something that you can do. There is. You can get off your chair. I know that. You can talk to people like me. Ask me what I go through in a day. Ask me what has happened in my life in Livonia. Ask me. I'll tell you. I'll tell you. My boyfriend and my brother got racially profiled by a cop that you so respect for putting speakers that were his in his car. At our school. At our school. Just because I love you does not mean I cannot hold you accountable. That's what my Christ does. That's what he does. This makes him upset. This is divine intervention.
Thank you. Good evening. Your comments are appreciated and heard. Thank you.
I don't really want to follow these young ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jody White. I'm a Livonia resident. I have complained, and an officer doesn't like when you complain, and so they can hurt you and accuse you of resisting arrest. So there's a problem with complaints. Number two, my white children are also being harassed by the police. So there is a problem with our police. If they have a black man in the seat, whether it's a boyfriend or a best friend, they're being pulled over and searched. My children are getting searched in Livonia. I don't like that. I tell them to respect, which is a beautiful thing. We tell them to, you know, speak about an attorney. But that's what my concern is, is why are our children having our cars searched? Why did my daughter, who went to Churchill High School, she got patted down by Livonia Police Officer? I don't like that. And I'm not going to cause any more problems. I've already tried to run for legislation, because yes, for reasonable cause, legislators, two-thirds of you could do something. Write the resolution, sir, please, and two-thirds vote on it. It can be done by a body of legislation. And then it's your job to make sure that they follow the rules and regulations, the ones that are on the tax dollar. We just want to live in our city. And as a Realtor for 35 years in Livonia, I don't want to tell you a lot of things that I do here, but money is green, and that's all I care about. But I'm sorry to say, I do think there's still an issue with the color of skin. So I'd like to, you know, thank these people for coming out. I'm not upset that that billboard's up there. You know, I live in the city. Been here since '87. Kind of embarrassing, but it's the truth. So you can't be embarrassed by the truth. And thank you for quoting my Lord Jesus Christ, because he is the one that matters, and God is in control. And thank you for all of you for serving and caring, and yes, for reasonable cause. Write the resolution, and two-thirds of you vote, and then you hold the people that are on the payroll responsible to behave.
Excuse me. Okay, I'm not going to ask again. You said that you didn't understand the rules. The rules have been explained. There's no clapping, so please, respect the rules. Good evening.
Good evening. I took some notes earlier, and there are some things that I would like to readdress. You went off on a whole speech about how everybody is welcome here. Do you know how easy it is for a privileged white man to say that? You can say it, but it doesn't mean it's true. You said we can pass a law or a bill to say that racism isn't allowed, and it won't do anything. Why not try? The city of Minneapolis was able to pass a law that banned chokeholds as use of force by police officers after the death of George Floyd. So don't tell me that your hands are tied here, because you have power. I don't want my friends and neighbors to feel fear for their lives when they pass through this city, or any city for that matter. You asked what our objective is. Stop killing black people. Put more into training your police officers. Put more funding into schools and education here. You can listen to what we have to say, and you can watch us protest, and at the end of the day, you're going to go home and live your lives as usual? Now is the time to do something, so do something. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right. You know, I'm sorry, you have one opportunity.
I'm asking for the permission of the council to address one more moment of your time. I think it is very important what I'm going to say. You asked for what we can do. Survivors, please.
Excuse me, we need, I would need, I would need someone to offer a resolution and a second and to vote on, uh... Excuse me.
Madam President, I'll offer a resolution to allow her to have a second comment.
For how long, Mr. McCullough?
How long do you need?
Three minutes, please.
I'll second that.
Three minutes.
Are there any objections?
Please, thank you. So it was stated that we needed an objective. We have an objective. And we would like to work with the city to draft this resolution. Reason being, none of you are people of color. You do not know what we need. You do not know how we feel. And so we believe that the voice of the citizens should be able to work with the council to draft the language in this resolution. Also, there are city councils and commissioner boards across this state and across the country that have declared racism as a health care crisis. This is what we're asking you to do. We are asking you to declare racism as a health care crisis. Now, we can talk about disparities. We have them. They're in health. They're in education. They're in the criminal justice system. They are in housing, and we can go on and on and on. So please, let's not say, "Well, God bless you. I love you. You are my brother." You all are my brothers and sisters, right? That is how God has ordained this thing. But at this moment in time, God is drawing a line in the sand. And that means you better be on the right side of it while you want to be talking about Christ. Because at the end of the day, while what you said is in part true, you do need to have those small conversations. When you hold these seats of power, there is influence. You can influence the police to put policies in place that would not allow racial profiling right here in Livonia. So there is something that you can do. So to say that, yes, it's not going to go away. It's 400 years. That is true. But as city council members, you can put this resolution in place with our help, we are asking, so that this resolution will hold government officials accountable, such as Mrs. McIntyre, who we believe operates in privilege, and I'm going to say borderline racism, what all of you don't understand. And maybe you should read White Fragility. But if you are my Caucasian brother and sister, racism and white supremacy is at the core of your soul. You have to work every day to not exercise your privilege. So what we're saying, while you're standing, sitting there with a blank face like you don't care, I'm going to pray that God allows your heart to not be hardened. Because the way that you have led this city, you are a part of the problem, ma'am. You are leading this city council. And for you to sit there and use that gavel as if you're God without no remorse, and just cold and heartless, it is disgusting. It is despicable. And you yourself should resign, because you are not what this council needs. We would rather work with Mr. Barr as the president than to work with you. We are asking that you resign. And if we have to mobilize the people so that we can get signatures and recall you, if you do not resign, we will move to do that, because you do not deserve to be in this seat. To everyone else, to everyone else, we are leaving our cards. It is our hope. It is our prayer that you will partner with us and work with us...
Thank you, you're done.
On the drafting of this resolution.
Thank you.
And you go ahead with your gavel. God bless you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council this evening? Seeing no one, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
Support. Is there an objection? I believe we can show five on that. The study meeting will reconvene in, what is it, 10 to 9? We'll reconvene at 9.